Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the school committee, Wednesday, June 5th at 7:00 PM. Welcome. Good to have everyone here. I'd like to start off the meeting with any public participation. Is there anyone that would like to address the committee? Seeing none, I will move on to good news.
Dr. Russo?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Palladino, are you in? Do we have our... Yes, please, come on down. We have our...
We missed one first.
Oh, we missed one first?
That's okay. I can go.
There's some tea right.
Oh, okay. Yes, thank you. So, our first piece of good news...
Good recovery.
...is the introduction of our new school committee student rep. Would you like to introduce yourself, please, and tell people what grade you are at the high school?
Hi, I'm Nicole Russo, and I'm a 10th grader currently at Wayham High School.
Welcome, Nicole.
And we are hoping that Nicole will be able to be with us for a few years here, working with the school committee. And the school committee chairman will be asking for updates for what's happening at the high school and your opinion about some of the important things discussed. So, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you.
Nicole, welcome. It's good to have you here.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, may we go to the second piece of good news?
Yes, please, thank you.
And now, we'd like to talk about the presentation from the student trip to Spain. Come on down, please.
And who is going to do the introductions? Would that be...
I'll do the introductions, then I'll step aside. Because this is a finely tuned organization. This is a group that has done many trips to many different countries, and it's all done after school hours, and it has really very minimal impact on the school day. And so, I'm pretty excited about this. I've got Kristi Prada, who's my secretary. Debbie Freitas is the assistant principal, and they're going to do the presentation, and they'll do some introductions. I know Sandy Pont went this past year from the middle school, and we'll have you guys do the introductions.
Welcome.
Okay, I'd like to introduce Erica Trask...
Hi.
Hi, Erica.
...and Zariah Lima. And both of these students had put together a presentation for us tonight, and I'd like to show that to you now.
Pinky.
Right, I don't know if she was wondering, waiting to reach the place... Mrs. Freitas?
...with paper on her...
Hi, tech. Hi, tech for ya.
Technology.
It's an overview of Toledo. She's going to need a mic. You're not going to hear it on TV.
Yep. Hold on just one second. We just need to get you a microphone.
This is...
Nope, it's fine. It's more for the audience.
This is the overlook of Toledo, where we stopped in Madrid.
Okay, so when we first arrived in Barcelona, we hit the ground running. We went on a walking tour after we dropped off our luggage at the hotel. We were able to see the famous shopping center, Las Ramblas. We visited the busy square many more times after this. And starting in 1377, Las Ramblas became a very active area with street vendors and many restaurants.
The Bank of Spain in Barcelona on the above right, and the Olympic Village in Barcelona on the left, were just some of the sights that we saw on our tour when we first got
So, on our second day, we spent it in the Catalonian capital, which is Barcelona. We saw the Sangrada Familia, Mount Montujic, and Parque Gal. On Mount Montujic, we saw a panoramic view of the city, which is shown right there. And we also went on the Antonio Gaudí tour. Every day was a different adventure, and each place we visited was very different and
Right here is La Sagrada de Familia. This will be finished in 2026, which would be the 100th year anniversary. And this whole one side is the new part, and the middle is the old's, and they're still working on this other half.
This is Parque Gal where we went, and this is Antonio Gaudí's house. It was all designed in Antonio Gaudí's, like, viewpoint. There's the famous lizard site that we went to see, and yeah.
During our time in Barcelona, we spent... We went to a monastery where the monks live. This was a mountain town called the monastery, right here. There was also a mass going on while we were there by the famous choirboys, which has a lot of... It's a very big attraction for visitors. And the last part of the day, we spent walking on the beach back in the Olympic Village.
So, when we went on a six-hour bus ride from Barcelona to Madrid, we made a stop in Zaragoza to see the famous basilica. The basilica has 12 pillars, and the nine chapels are covered with domes. And three bombs were set on the basilica during the Spanish Civil War, but none were detonated. They still have them in the basilica.
While we were in Madrid, we visited the Royal Palace, where the royal family still lives and still holds social events. We also visited the Real Madrid Soccer Stadium, Plaza de Toros, where they still hold bull fights every Sunday during the season. At the end of the day, we arrived at Las Tablas, where we took flamenco dance lessons and enjoyed a professional flamenco dance show.
So, this is where we went in Madrid. There's the Plaza de Toros, where they have the bullfighting, the Royal Palace, the Real Madrid Stadium, and where we learned flamenco at Las Tablas.
In Toledo, we visited a century-old synagogue named the San Maria la Blanca, which the Muslims built for the Jewish community, and the Christians at one time worshipped there. It is now a national monastery monument, where they also... And we also saw a sword-making demonstration.
This is just the synagogue and the sword-making demonstration. This trip was a lifetime experience. We made new friends, learned about a different culture, and traveled outside our comfort zone for the first time. Even though it was a school trip, it was like having our history class right there in front of us. We made so many memories that we'll never forget. We recommend this experience to other students for the upcoming trip. We would also like to thank Ms. Freitas, Ms. Prada, and Ms. Pont for putting together this adventure. Here are a few pictures that shows the experience in a nutshell.
This was at Montserrat in a little open area that was there, where we waited for our bus to come, and we just decided to entertain ourselves with doing handstands.
This was also Montserrat, and it shows like the view over the mountains. It was very high up. Everyone was really scared, but...
This was when we went to Mount Montujic, and there was a real person statue, and as soon as we saw him, all of us just ran up to him and just like taking pictures and wanted to take pictures with him. So, at... Right here was one of the moments that we all remember.
This is when we were at the Royal Palace in Madrid. You can see it in the background. We were just at the fountain outside, and we decided to take a picture.
This is back at the Montujic, where we were taking pictures of the overview of Barcelona, and this is the panoramic view of the city.
This was at Parque Gal, right near the lizard. We all gathered, and we had free time to look around, and we heard some beautiful music in the background.
This was a living statue. It was a man, and he was just sitting in this little crevice, and he would move every time, like, you want to take a picture, and he would start dancing and making funny faces at us, and just made us laugh and entertained us.
So, this is the Spanish flag and the Catalonian flag. There's a little dispute between Madrid and Catalonia because of the taxes and the economy, but they all come together as one in this picture.
You said you were going to put it on the CD?
No, we will have the...
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have questions for you. You have to stay there. Questions from the committee?
Yes, Mike.
You visited the bullfighting arena. Did you actually see a bullfight?
No, we didn't.
No? Okay.
They do still have them every Sunday, though, so, yeah. We weren't in the season for the bullfighting.
Just watch the school committee meeting, same thing.
By the way, that little dispute that you talked about is actually a major dispute, but we won't go into that. But what I do want to ask you is, the... Your classmates who went to Cape Verde, it was a... Seemed to be a powerful cultural experience for them. Spain is currently going through a terrible economy. Literally, 25% of the population is unemployed. Was there any evidence of the almost depression-like situation for the Spanish people, or were they all as happy as the living statue?
Well, we did see some people on the sides of the streets, but other than that, everybody looked happy and didn't seem like there were any financial troubles.
A lot of tourists.
Yeah, a lot of tourists.
They were glad you were there.
Yeah.
Other questions? One of the things that I saw in there was Gaudí's church that you went to, that... And were you able to walk through it and go through all the different nooks and crevices of it? I mean, through the bridge, the outside bridge across? How scared were you as you went over that bridge?
We just went around the outside.
You went around the outside?
We went around the outside, but we could have free time to go in if we wanted to.
Okay. Just a quick note, I went there with my family. We actually got stuck inside. They locked one of the doors, so there's one way that you can go in and go out, and they lock the door at the very end, so there were people that were stuck on that bridge up there, so if anybody went on it. But I just... I... The experience... I agree, the... One of the comments that you made, what an amazing experience it was, and just that picture that you had, to realize that you were at a place that started, you know, 100 years ago and is about to be finished, is pretty incredible that you're going to be able to say when they do the big celebration, when they open that, when it's finally done, and it's blood, sweat, and tears of, you know, hundreds and thousands of men and women that built that, that you're going to say that you were actually there before it's actually done, and you can pass that on to generations forward. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm really excited that you got to take part of that, and I think that I can speak for the whole committee that we do know what an educational experience that is and a lifelong experience, and I hope that you continue to travel based on this one experience that you've had.
Yeah, I know I will.
Don't you?
Yes.
One of the things I'd like to point out is Barcelona and Spain is amazing, but more amazing than this is the experiential education that you kids and the people that went on the trip had. And, you know, we take a bad rap here in Wayham every once in a while and about not providing enrichment opportunities for our kids. And so, I just want to point out to the fact that, you know, here is a classic example of an enrichment opportunity that was made available for Wayham kids. And I just think that, you know, sometimes there's an awful lot to be said out there about all the things that we're not doing right, and I think that we have to start emphasizing all the things that we do right. And providing you kids with this experiential education is one of the things that we do do right. So, I want to wish you the best. I know that it'll be a lifetime experience that you'll remember forever, just walking down Las Ramblas is an education in itself. But I think that we have to, as a committee, start emphasizing all of those things that we do that are right and are good in Wayham, and this is a classic example of that. And so, thank you very much.
Great. Any last thoughts?
I just wanted to point out that this group of students that we took when we went on this trip, everyone was engaged. Every tour guide that we had was so full of information that you... If you didn't pay attention, you were bound to miss something. And they listened, and they took it all in, they asked questions, they were taking pictures, they were right there. And there is so much information that you get a little overwhelmed sometimes, but you're appreciative of the fact that you had this opportunity to be right there and actually see it rather than open up a textbook, because you can't really relate quite as well as actually standing in the place that it happened. So, every time we went somewhere, they had an opportunity to learn, even in the hotel. We had the... Our gentleman at the hotel would make us ask for our room keys in Spanish. So, it was right down to that. So, you didn't... Couldn't go up and say, "I needed room 216." You had to ask for it in Spanish. So, it was a learning opportunity every minute, and I'm thankful that we were able to do that, and especially with this group of students, and I'm glad that these young ladies put this together for us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, again.
I'd also like to just reiterate with everyone, I know you know what an educational
experience it is, but I don't think there was five minutes that went by at any site that we were at where we did not learn about something about the language, something about the history, something about the culture, the architecture, the art, geography, everything. So, the students really, I have to say, this trip in and of itself, I've been on, you know, six EF tours now, and all of them were very educational, but this particular one, even the adults that went on the trip will probably agree with me that there wasn't any time that we did not spend that was not learning in some fashion or another. So, I want to thank the school committee for always supporting us in these trips, and I know that many of the students that went on this trip, and some of the adults as well, are waiting to learn about our next trip, and they want a meeting in the fall to know where we're going in two years. So, we will probably be back sometime in the fall, and I hope that, once again, you are as supportive as you have been in the past. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Portugal is right next door.
Great. So, one more piece of good news?
Yes.
I may have good news.
I received from one of the teachers at the Minet Forest School, Tanya Duff, who is here this evening. And this is at Minet Forest, we have a school-wide board that focuses on a character trait that we would like to see the students demonstrate for the month. Students that demonstrate the word during the month, place their name on a special slip, and it is placed on a board that is located in the front office. And I will begin to pass this around, but this is a picture of some of those slips of paper that have been put on that board. This year, the school has reached out to local businesses in order to reward the students. McDonald's, Red Robin, and Friendly's in Sagamore have graciously donated items. McDonald's donated ice cream sundaes. Red Robin and Friendly's donated free children's meals. They gratefully appreciate the community working with the school, and they are also thankful for the generosity of McDonald's, Red Robin, and Friendly's. And so, this is another example where a school is rewarding students for doing the right thing.
Great.
That's all for me.
Thank you. Other pieces of good news? Dr. Sylvia?
Well, I hope I'm not stealing anyone's thunder, but...
Bless you.
I was very, very impressed about... Couple of hours ago, we had the honor and the privilege of attending the cooperative school graduation. And again, this is something that I want to point with pride, not only as a member of the school committee, but also as a citizen of Wayham. You know, we hear a lot about... Again, I'm on my... I'm on my kick in my soapbox, but we hear a lot about what we're not doing right and all of the problems that we're having. And, you know, I think that we deal with these problems as best we can, given the resources and the circumstances around them. But here is a classic situation where the town of Wayham is inclusive. You know, we hear about, well, things are better somewhere else, or, you know, this school is better, or that system is better. But here is a system, the town of Wayham, that provides an alternative route for kids who have not always had it easy to get their high school diploma. And I had the privilege of seeing approximately 40 students at the Wayham Cooperative Junior Senior High School receive their diploma this evening. So, I point with pride to the fact that we have recognized the fact that there are certain kids that need an alternative pathway to success, and we provided that pathway here in Wayham. And I can look around at all of our neighboring towns and all of our neighboring schools, and we are unique in this. We are unique in this role. So, I think that we should point to the accomplishments of those students at the Wayham Junior Senior Cooperative School with pride, because they not only represent their families, they have rose above whatever hardships that they have encountered, and they have represented the town of Wayham very, very well. So, I really, really want to congratulate them, those 40 graduates and their families, for sticking it out and getting their diploma, and I think we all could be very, very proud of the accomplishments being made over at the Wayham Cooperative Junior Senior High School.
Great, thanks.
Go ahead.
Probably want to talk about the same thing.
Maybe not.
All right. I just want to thank Mary Morgan and all the staff at... For the kindergarten preschoolers coming into the system for Deacon's and Minet. I got the invite to go to the ice cream social. No one ever says no to an ice cream social. And it's nice to see the volunteers there, and myself and Mr. Sweat were there also, and I was presented with a nice apron that I can wear next year. The only problem, when I got home, I put the apron on, and my wife made me clean the whole house. So, that was the only bad thing. But I want to say, nice job by everyone, and it's exciting to see the young kids, the faces, and the excitement, because they're going to two of our top schools in Deacon's and Minet.
A week ago, I was reminded that there was a chorus and orchestra concert put on by the Minet Forest School. I confess that I hadn't been to one before. I was joined there by Dr. Sylvia and Mr. Flaherty, and I want to say, especially because music has been a critical part of my life, essentially since I could walk, it was an outstanding job.
Good job.
And Mrs. Siemens and Mrs. Menugian deserve a tremendous amount of credit to take young people and make music fun and enjoyable, not only for themselves, but for the people in the audience, so congratulations.
The arts are still alive despite all the critics.
Thank you, Mr. Sweat, for getting to that. That was on my list, too, that we attended the Minet Band. And it was my first time going to Minet myself, because my son does the Deacon's Band, so I usually go to that one. And I was glad that Mrs. Siemens reminded me that, you know, of the Minet Band having their spring concert, and I enjoyed it as well. And also, a few days apart was the Deacon's Band, and we saw that, too. So, there's, like you say, Dr. Sylvia, the arts, they're doing pretty well in that regard, because there's quite a few students in that program. I want to mention, I don't know... This is from May 9th in Wayham. I don't recall this being mentioned at any previous school committee meeting, but Makepeace, always very generous, you know, to Wayham in general, but they're giving the incoming superintendent $20,000 to do as she sees fit. They consider it a welcome present. So, I don't know if anyone caught that. That caught my attention as some really, really good news. Also, wanted to say that I attended the Deacon's Spelling Bee today.
Did you win?
I didn't. I didn't. But that was a really good... It's always a good time, but it was really good. And I just want to congratulate Avani Montesino. She won the whole thing.
Oh, great.
Yep. It got down... They take two kids from every class in the third, fourth, and fifth grade, because they have their own little mini spelling bees in their class, and then they have them all, the best from every class up at the stage. And it got down to the top four were all girls, and it was two fourth graders and two fifth graders. And then, when it got down to the final two, it was a fourth grader and a fifth grader. And the fourth grader, who were neck and neck together, was C.C. Patino, and she deserves a hearty congratulations as well, because she was so enthusiastic. She just really... It was just such a good time, and I just wanted to point that out.
Thanks, Mike.
So, I'll just end it to say that this is a great couple of weeks in Wayham, that, you know, we sit at these board meetings, and we do talk a lot about issues that we're facing in budget cuts, and it's always not a happy week, but, you know, this week is a week for celebrating. The athletics banquet was last night for the high school seniors. We're talking about kids that are not only captains in two to three sports, lettered in two to three sports, while also continuing an academic rigor and just, you know, a schedule that I couldn't even believe. So, the parents and the students that were there last night, kudos to just an amazing career, not only from, you know, being a Wayham, you know, athlete, but then also working through and doing whatever they can to succeed. So, that was great. We also, just so everyone is aware, the senior awards is happening Thursday night, and then we have the high school graduation. Weather's playing with us. I wish that it would just make up its mind, but it's supposed to be Friday, but we'll see if it's Friday or Saturday. But we have two other opportunities this week to celebrate Wayham students, and that's coming up. So, again, love it when there's a lot of good news at a school committee meeting. So, thanks to everyone for sharing tonight. Anything else? All right, so we'll move on to the minutes of meetings, May 21st.
May 23rd.
May 22nd. What did I say, 21st? Okay. May 22nd?
One correction. I'm getting good like Mr. Sweat and picking these out, but under the minutes of the meeting, it said, "Mr. Flaherty move approval." Should be a D.
Were you looking, Kenny?
Under minutes of the meeting? Yeah.
It says, "Mr. Flaherty move approval of minutes of May 8th."
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think mine's the next meeting.
Okay. And so, and also, should that be five? Oh, oh?
No.
Oh, no, five.
No, because...
If you look further at the bottom of the page...
Mr. Sweat arrived at 6:20 something.
Oh, okay.
Those votes took place prior.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve with that change?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Okay. So, the next minutes are May 29th?
I have a correction.
Okay.
Bottom of the page, the vote on the new superintendent. It was 5-1.
Four.
4-1, rather, as opposed to 4-0.
Yep. Okay. Other changes?
No, we all have the same thing.
Okay. I'll take a motion to approve with that change?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? 5-0-0. Thank you. School improvement plans. Ms. Miranda, I could have you come up. First school improvement plan we will have is for West Wayham Academy. Welcome. Good to have you here.
Well, Ms. Miranda is getting ready on her computer. I'd like to recommend any members of the school board that would like to drive by West Academy, you'll see some new flowers... You'll see some new flowers. The students at West Wareham did a beautiful job landscaping the front of that building, planting flowers and bushes and so forth. And I believe we got a lot of help from the folks at Home Depot. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, and I...
They were more than generous.
Yes. In fact, they've come back, they saw the work of the youngsters, and I believe they're going to donate some more things to us.
Yes.
So, that will be coming at a future meeting.
They want to donate more, they want to donate air conditioners. They actually came out, and it was so hot in there that they wanted to donate air conditioners, and then they wanted to come back next year with a team to help out, to redo the landscaping where the kids have gym and the little swing area and stuff over at West. That was very good.
Great. For those folks that are new to our meetings, that happens all the time. It's a way to save energy. So, I would just wave their arms when it goes off.
So, I'd like to start out with the first slide is the enrollment. Our current enrollment at West Academy is nineteen students. We are currently, we have twenty, we're licensed for twenty-four students, and we're at nineteen right now. We had six students who've moved into Wareham through the foster care system out of those nineteen students. And we had eleven students who had transitioned from either the high school, the middle school, or the cooperative through the IEP team process. So, the six students that moved into Wareham, they had day school IEPs, which would have been an average cost of $40,000 per placement. So, by having West Academy, we were able to service those students without sending them out of district, which would have cost us $240,000 to send them out of district. And then those other eleven students that we had from either the cooperative school or the high school or the middle school, that would have been a cost of $440,000 to send those students to an out-of-district placement. So, between the savings on the six students that transferred in and the students that came over from our own schools, there was a savings of $680,000. We also, in addition to that, had two students who came to us through a tuition, so that was $58,000 of tuition money that came into the district. The current budget for West Academy is $475,669. So, we're really in the positive of $262,000, and that's not even counting the transportation costs that would cost to transport these students to out-of-district placements. For next year, our projected enrollment is twenty students. We have three seniors who are graduating on Friday, so we're very proud of them. And we have four students that would be transitioning in September from the middle school, seventh graders, who are currently sixth graders now at the middle school, who would be transitioning in in September.
Question?
Well, the first question is, how do you want to handle questions?
I think that let's ask them during the presentation.
Okay. It's ironic that before the meeting started, we were having a discussion up here about the trouble that boys seem to be having in public education, or maybe education in general. And I noticed your enrollment is seventeen boys and two girls.
And two girls.
Do you share the fact that boys seem to be having more difficulty in public education, and do you have a theory as to why that is?
Actually, we were talking about this today at our case management meeting with our clinician. We just, we're kind of tossing around ideas, and all of those boys really lack a male role model in their life. They're missing, they're missing a father figure in their life, whether it be their actual father or a father figure, an uncle, or even a relatives that are close. So, that's something, I think, that to take a look at. And that was one of the reasons that we had hired a male as our behavior interventionist and a male para, and that has been a really good bond for our students. And the para professional is actually a coach for freshman football over at the high school, so they've been able to have a bond around sports also. But I do believe that, for the boys, that lack of male role model is an impact for them.
Thank you.
I have a question. We're going to go by sections, is that how, do you want to do it?
Oh, sorry. Want me to go back?
Yes.
Oh. How many, could you repeat, just, how many foster placements did you get?
We had six that moved into Wareham.
This year?
Yes.
Okay. And they all came with IEPs?
Correct, with day school IEPs.
For a town this size and a school system this size, I know we have, I know we have the alternative school, but doesn't that seem disproportionate?
Yes.
Is there any reason why you think that that might be happening?
Wareham has a large population of specialized foster care through DCF and Child and Family, which is the COMCARE, which is the specialized foster care agencies. And Wareham happens to have a lot of, a high percentage of foster parents who specialized in specialized foster care.
I guess my point is, and I'm not, this part of the law I'm not familiar with, and anyone that knows better than I do, please speak up. But it seems to me that Massachusetts state agencies have put together stages, if you will, for lack of a better word, of the severity of the situation, the family situation. And it seems to me that we're getting the far end of the spectrum here in Wareham, and yet, and that is controlled basically by the state. The state provides these tier, this tier system. Are we getting any additional support from the state to deal with this?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know if Mr. LaZan has any other information.
Yes.
We received no extra funds for those students. It is calculated as part of our chapter seventy, but approximately twelve years ago or fifteen years ago, we were able to recoup funds, which allowed us to hire a social worker for the district for the large number of foster children. Unfortunately, after the law was passed, they funded it for two years and then haven't funded it since.
So, I guess my frustration is that this puts an incredible burden on the local school system, and it puts an incredible amount of dollars being put on this. And I'm not saying that these children are not deserving, because I'm sure they are. But it would seem to me that if the state is controlling the level of severity or the extra, the impact of these children on homes, that's not the right word, but the severity of these children and have specialized homes for them, there would seem to me that that should trickle down into the school department that is going to be sharing a disproportionate part of that expense, because these kids are coming in with very specific in-school IEP regulations or accommodations. So, I guess what I'm saying is, it's very frustrating for me as a school committee member, and, you know, vying for every single solitary dollar that we can get to fund our school department, to have a disproportionate amount of money being spent on this particular situation. And it's not that these children are not worth it, because I think they are, and we should provide the best level of education for all our students, whether they be foster kids or not. But the point is that, you know, we're being mandated regulations from the state of Massachusetts, and yet we're not being provided any relief for this. So, that's my frustration, and please forgive me for my soapbox.
I forgive you. Continue.
The next slide has to do with the attendance and discipline. As I mentioned, we have three out of our three seniors who have met the graduation requirements and will be graduating in June. I'm happy to say that one of our students has actually been accepted into the Universal Technical Institute, so it's a post-secondary education program for auto mechanics. And he went through the application process and interview, and he was accepted into their program. The other two students, we had brought them out to Cape Cod Community College, and they are exploring certificate programs. We brought them also through the application project, process. We've partnered with Mass Rehab Center. They've been wonderful. They've come out to our school, they met with families and students in order to help the students access appropriate resources after they leave West Academy, appropriate resources for attending post-secondary, for filling out independent living housing applications, and actual support in obtaining employment out in the community. As we've mentioned before, attendance is always an ongoing issue at West Academy due to our population. This year, we've had several students that were hospitalized in order to, for them to stabilize their emotional capacity. And several of our students unfortunately were committed to the Department of Youth Services due to some activities that they were having in the community. But there is good news. There was a decrease actually in our discipline referrals from last year to this year. Last year, we had 139 discipline referrals, and this year was 114. And those discipline referrals range from, you know, a minor infraction to some of the more severe things that have taken place. Our next slide demonstrates our MCAS scores. So, I know that the committee had asked if I could give individual scores, so this year I labeled them by just the alphabet, A, B, C, students. The first group of students, the A, B, C, and D, are our grade ten students that took the MCAS last year. The three, there were three 10th graders who took the ELA, and they were all in the proficient range for ELA, for the 248, 242, and 246. We had student B transferred in to West with a score of 222. Our math scores for those particular students were in the needs improvement range, something... Sorry, I'm just going to make it clear. Were in the needs improvement range. Then our next group of kids through E through H were our grade eight students. And if you can see, if you look at the growth percentile, so the students' MCAS scores, they were higher than the scores of the percentage of the students in the state who received similar scores. So, our kids are making growth. Student A had a 77% growth compared to the previous year, students that received similar scores. As we move down, we have grade seven is at the bottom with the I and J students. As you can see, our students that come into West are usually at a lower score. Those 10th grade students are actually students who have been at West for at least a year and have retaken their MCAS scores and were able to make gains and growth in those scores. Our goal is to hopefully bring those seventh graders up and the eighth graders, and the more time that the students are spending at West, the higher their MCAS scores are The students that enter West, many of them, they come with gaps in their learning and in their skills, and most of them that transition in are coming from different foster homes, hospitals, community-based acute treatment centers, various school districts, DCF placements, DYS placements. So, a lot of times when these kids are in the hospital situations, they're not getting their education as they would if they were in school. So, they have so many gaps. So, by the time they get to West, there are so many gaps that we have to go back and reteach. Our extracurricula, again, kids at West seem to have difficulty, and it's a challenge for them. Many of the kids have, they have social phobias, they have a lot of anxiety about being in large groups, that's why they're in a smaller setting. But they do participate. We have a school store at West, and all the kids participate in that. Our kids were able to participate in the graduation activities. Two of our seniors actually went to the prom and had a fabulous time. We were very fortunate this year. We have a new teacher, Ms. Keith, and she has some friends in France, and she brought in the course of teaching French I this year to our students, and our students were able to Skype with another student in France, and our students were communicating in French with the other students. So, it was pretty amazing, and it was a big accomplishment for them. I mentioned before, we had a student who played for the Viking freshman football, and all the students participated in the landscaping and cooking projects. We always try to encourage our students to participate in either the middle school kids' tiger football or the YMCA activities also. And we have a lot of kids who are interested in music, so we're trying to get them involved in some outside music activities or lessons. This brings us to our goals from last year and what we were able to achieve and the progress. So, we were able to implement the six plus one writing traits. They were embedded in all the content areas, and students participated in three common expository writing assessments that they were common, and they demonstrated an overall two-point increase on those assessments. Staff and students revived the student portfolios to address the common core standards. Teachers implemented formative assessments in all content areas. And then the teachers came together and collaborated on different types of formative assessment and what seemed to work best with particular students in the classes. And they were able, students were able to demonstrate a higher level of thinking skills, more able to answer open-ended questions by using some of these formative assessments that the teachers had come up with, actually making it more of a game, almost like a Jeopardy, and different levels of questioning. And students were really interested in it, and they were engaged, and they showed the critical thinking skills. The teachers collaborated on project-based learning. We had several projects. One was the finot across the curriculum that also encompassed the Skyping to, with a student in France. Students completed a bridge project, and the project that the students are most proud of would be their garden project. They began the project by researching different perennials that grow in the area, our area. They drew scale drawings and proposed the flower beds. They researched the different materials and the cost. They wrote letters to local businesses, and actually Home Depot responded graciously. And the students, actually, one student, I'm going to see if I can play this video for you. I promised her that I would show you. She created a scrapbook. I have the scrapbook also. And she created a video of the project. And we'll see if Ms. Miranda can do this. Maybe not. It didn't work. Oh, but the picture's not there. What'd you say?
Minimize that.
It won't?
Yep.
Let me see. It won't do it. And now, the whole thing is frozen. Yeah, it might be. It won't. Well, she did a really good job. We're trying to, we worked with Ms. Di Filippo. We're going to try to put it up on our website so people are able to see it. We're gonna try to put it up on our website so people are able to see it. Uh-oh. Uh-oh. I need a tech person.
Christian to the rescue.
I should have brought the student with me. She so would have been able to do this.
You played it twice.
Oh, there it is. I just needed Christian. Don't go too far. We gotta get this back. She did this? She created this?
The student created this?
The student created this? I can't hear. The student created this? Yes, the student created this. And she said, "Will you bring it?" And I said, "Oh, I don't know." She didn't really want to get dirty, so her job was to be the photographer. She created an amazing scrapbook that we presented to Home Depot. Home Depot came out and she played the slide for them and she presented them with a scrapbook. It was- it was an emotional time, really. Ms. Miranda, I just think in the interest of time, I think that this is wonderful and I encourage the committee members to go to the website to see the full video. Okay, thank you. And tell her that we love the music. Well, I do, sorry. I will tell her. She will be happy. She will be happy to know that I showed it. She is one of the students that will be graduating on Friday.
Is this you?
Yes, this is me. Thank you, Christian. Thank you, Christian. I've done without you. Our next action step was that we had said that we were gonna do pre and post-test in math. And these were our results. The students were using the E2020 program, the online learning for statistics and probability. And they demonstrated an overall average of fifty percent- a fifty percent improvement from the pre and post-test. This group of kids did really well with the E2020 with supplemental teaching materials from- from their math teacher. Our seventh and eighth grade students were given pre-chapter assessments and post-unit assessments, which resulted in an overall fifteen percent improvement for them. And our grade ten students for geometry, they utilized the E2020 program as well. And they demonstrated a fifty percent increase from their pre-test to their post-test. Our math teacher was new this year to West Academy. She participated in the mentor program. She had joined the math vertical team. She worked with her mentor from the high school where she did observations and went and visited the classrooms there. The high school math teacher also came out to West Academy. So it was a good collaboration. We had our coffee hours. Unfortunately, it wasn't as successful as I thought they would be. The students created invitations. We sent them out. They baked treats for the guests. Students put together an iPad activity for guests. They also displayed their projects. We just had limited participation. Mr. Sweat, thank you for coming. The kids appreciated that.
You're welcome.
However, we did host quarterly award ceremonies for honor roll and for various student accomplishments. And we ended up having good participation from parents and guardians for that. So that was very positive. We're still working and developing our West Wareham webpage. And this will be another thing that- that is added to it. We've increased our distribution of the monthly newsletter. We have yet to distribute informational mailings to our surrounding towns. Our kids during a marketing lesson, they created West Wareham Academy brochures. And they've highlighted different parts of West Academy. So now what I'm gonna do is compile different pieces from each one of their brochures and create a West Wareham brochure out of their ideas and send it out to local towns. Proud to say and happy that our bus violations have decreased by twenty percent. Jeff is amazing and he works really well with us. And we've worked with the bus driver and the bus monitor, teaching them our behavior management system and educating them about our students. We've had a really good working relationship with transportation this year. Our students, we really tried to get them integrated into- integrate technology into so many things that they do. The technology seems to just really work for our students, to engage them. So teachers were- teachers had them working on doing a lot of research and like students approved websites from the teachers and also how to- whether or not a website is reliable. So the teachers really worked with the kids on that. We had the iPads, so our math teacher used the iPads as she was part of the iPad Pilot Team. And used different applications and apps. She used them as her do-nows or her problem of the day. So she was incorporating the different math apps into her lessons. And then these are our goals, our focus areas for the upcoming school year. To improve literacy skills for our students. What we've realized is that when our students are coming in, and I spoke about this before, that our students come with so many learning gaps. And so often, I think that we assume that when a child enters, even if the child enters tenth grade, that they should have a certain skill set. And that isn't necessarily true. So we really need to focus more on some direct instruction. And the direct instruction of active reading skills, reading strategies, using visualization, prediction, teaching to connect concepts and to be able to question and evaluate, you know, their- their writing pieces. So we really need to do more of that- that direct instructions. Another thing that we had talked about as a staff is that we would like to see our students improve self-advocacy skills and become more responsible learners. And some of the staff members have thought about if students could, before their IEP meetings, if they could work with staff members to create their- their transition plans, meaning from- from grade to grade. And also for their IEP meeting, to become more involved in their IEP process. Because so many kids have gone to all these placements and all these adults are making the decisions for them. And I think it's really important, especially for our older students, for them to be engaged in the meeting. So they would come- they would come, they would do a self-analysis survey and then present a written document during their IEP and become an active participant in the IEP process. We've also wanted our students to increase critical thinking, problem-solving, communication skills. And for us teachers to meet the unique needs of each diverse learner through purposeful assessment and differentiated instruction. So the assessment might look different depending upon the student and the student's needs. Some students maybe need the oral assessment where another student is written or another student might do a project. There's just different various ways of assessing their knowledge. And to improve math skills is another one of our goal. So we've increased time on task by assigning a remedial math intervention for an additional fifty minutes per week. So basically, it's back to that direct instruction and not taking things for granted, building that foundation. Many of our kids, because of their gaps, they're missing the lower level, the foundation piece that's necessary to be able to- to solve the the critical thinking math questions. So we're going to- we're gonna- we're gonna try it. We're gonna add in the remedial math where they learn some more of the basic foundation skills that will be applied then into their math class. Students will increase automaticity in math facts. There'll be weekly oral drills written within their math class. Students will complete projects which encompass math and science standards coupled with 21st century learning objectives. Our kids do very well with those community projects and cross-curriculum projects. And we really want our students to improve open response writing in math. That seems to be an area, when we looked at the MCAS data, that seems to be an area where our kids are- are struggling. Hold on one second. Question?
Do you routinely feel frustrated that you're getting your students too late?
Yes.
So if that's the case, and Mr. Lazon may have an opinion on this as well, which I'd be happy to hear, what's the solution to the fact that you're getting them too late? Where's the system falling down so that by the time you get them, they've got all these gaps?
I don't think it's even just our system. I think it's-
I don't- I didn't mean Wareham School District. I meant the- the big system.
Right. I don't- I don't know how to fix that. These- the- the students have transitioned, like I said before, from hospital settings to this setting to numerous foster homes. I have one student who- who just told me yesterday, he just came into me, the year's ending. He just came, walked through my door. He's been through five foster homes in five different programs before he walked through my door last week.
But at some point, this was a normal kid, right? At some point.
I think "normal" is very relative.
I understand. I understand.
Right, so it's really not a term that- I don't know. He- some students are not, you know? Some students have significant disabilities when they're born and other students through various forms of trauma. The disabilities are really caused from their- their living situations, their life experiences, and the trauma that they've- they've gone through.
I guess I'm just hoping that, starting with Mary and working forward, that we, at least within our system, are actively making sure-
Reaching out to the younger, yeah.
That interventions are occurring at the appropriate time rather than when it's already too late and you're frustrated that it's too late and the gaps exist, et cetera, et cetera. But that's a whole subject-
Right, but I think that Wareham is doing that. I mean, over at Deacon's, they have the LEET program and that is a very similar structure
So you're saying that-
of West. So I think Wareham is taking that step.
And these kids that are transitioning in from many different communities are your biggest frustration?
Because they- they- they come in with such- such gaps. So- so the hope is, right, that those LEET, the kids in the lower grades will come through. You know, maybe they won't even make it thus far because they will have those early interventions.
Okay, as long as we're doing it, great. Thank you.
Increase community awareness. It's always a goal at West. I'm gonna continue to host the quarterly coffee hours, maybe vary the times a little bit. I'm open to suggestions if people have a different idea of what I could do to get people to come into West, to visit. I'm definitely open to- to any suggestions. We'll continue to update our webpage so that way our mission is out there and people who are surfing around can- can see what we're all about. And to distribute the informational mailings, that is, that's still an ongoing goal. Our- our school adjustment council, who is the Walker Partnership, she is creating a group counseling curriculum. And she's putting together the binder for- for that to move forward for next year with a specific curriculum. So the counseling topics will be such examples of anti-bullying, anger management, substance abuse, education, healthy relationships, et cetera. She'll incorporate an incentive component, which will include group activity to help build social skills and independent living. And then our goal is to continue to improve our school climate. And we've been using the Peace Builder model. So we're gonna continue using the Peace Builder models and incorporating our raffle. And now I've been through, in the process still, of the Behavior PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Support. So I've begun my trainings. I've had a training for the staff and we'll still have two more trainings before school gets out. So we'll implement that model along with the Peace Builders. And we're kinda gonna tweak our model of our behavior system at West. We have a level system at West for students. And if anybody wants to come out and visit, I'll be happy to go through the level system with you and- and show you. I think Mr. Flaherty came out and I went through our whole model with Mr. Flaherty at one point. So anybody's welcome to come.
I recommend it.
And we thought of a different way to integrate technology this year. Actually, it was one of my paraprofessionals who really came up with the idea for our students, for the school store, that we would revitalize the store and create more of a student business out of the- out of the store. Students would actually go online and apply to- for a store management job so they can go through the application process. Students will create surveys, item lists, prices, order forms, and sales tracking. They'll use the Microsoft Office for the operations of the store. They'll be responsible for tracking and utilizing the sales for the store. The managers will create and maintain the account for each student in the school. And an order track and balance currency earned, and that's part of our level system, the students earn. It's like a token, a token economy. So each student will be balancing pretty much their own checkbook, if you will, for the store and the business. So that is it. Right. Thank you very much. Yes, question?
What is the- well, this is the fourth year for West?
This is my third year at West and I believe, yes, and then the fourth year.
Do we have a cap number right now? You talked about nineteen and projected for twenty-
So we're licensed through the state for twenty-four.
So you can take in up to four more students for next year?
For next year.
Which would bring revenue in?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions?
To sort of piggyback on Ms. Affon's point, I know when we did this last year, the- the school improvement plan, it was discussed that we were gonna try to promote this and get more students to come in and get some revenue that way. And I know that things have been pretty busy and stuff, but where- where do we stand with that? Have we done anything in that area of trying to, you know, do some outreach to promote this for other-
No, and that's what I just said in the last, I think, the last two slides, that we really- that we really haven't gotten out there. And that will be one of the priorities for- for next year. This year, I started pretty much with a new staff. So that really took a priority to try to get everything stabilized. So next year, we're going in with our same staff and we'll move forward and we'll get it out there. I had mentioned in one of the slides that the- I even included the students in creating a brochure so that way we can go- we can put it out there. So I used the students' ideas and this, you know, the student, you know, impact of how West Wareham has impacted the students. And then I'll collaborate on their ideas and create a brochure and- and get it out there.
Is that- is that the sort of thing where you're kind of like on your own as a school? Or do you have any resources at the central office that could help you with that?
Hopefully, maybe moving forward.
I guess currently, no?
Yep. Hold on one second. Bob's gonna come down. Okay.
I couldn't resist. So I just wanna add to some of the things that Wendy is saying and two items that I think are important to note. One is that the question of does- is there support from the central office? I meet monthly with all of the special ed directors on the Cape. And I meet probably three or four times a year with all of the special education directors in the Southeast region. And every- at each meeting, we talk about what the population of our programs look like so that we can have, and many of the referrals to West come from those meetings from the local special ed directors. Those are the people who we target from- from my level. The second thing that Wendy didn't talk about is that I just- The second thing that Wendy didn't talk about is that, I just want to clarify that one of the teaching positions currently in the FY14 budget actually is paid for through the revenues that are collected as a result of the kids who are tuitioned in this year. So we would have another, I believe, the number of sixty-seven thousand dollars that would be on the LEA budget that is being paid through the revolving account that is there because of the revenues from the tuitions at West.
Thank you.
I definitely think we should be promoting it and getting the twenty-four, you know, as much as we can to mitigate all those costs for our students. One more question?
Okay.
The goal of this school really is to get kids back into regular education, right?
Yes, it's always, the main goal is always to transition students.
And how are we doing with that this year?
We had three students transition back to the high school this year.
Thank you. That's good.
Any other questions? Yes.
As Mr. Luzon knows, I was lukewarm on West Academy four years ago. But I'll be the first one to admit that I may have been wrong.
Did you say "may have"?
He's mistaken. He said "may".
Just checking, Dr. Sylvia.
I still agree with Mr. Flaherty. I don't think that we reached maxed out yet in terms of income potential, but that's not why we did it. And, you know, we can't lose sight of the fact of why we did it. Well, why we did it is it gave us control of the educational goals of our kids. And that was the only reason why we really did it. We didn't do it to make money. We did it because we had a population of young people that could not reach their educational goals in a traditional setting. And that's why we did it. And, you know, the additional revenues is a byproduct of the main reason why we did it. But the reason we had to do it is because, again, and not to beat a dead horse, because we've got a disproportionate amount of kids coming into Wareham with sophisticated issues. And it's, and we have to do the best we can with those kids. I mean, if they move into town, they move into town. They're our kids. And we have to do what we can to provide them the best possible opportunities that we can. But it is a struggle financially. It is a struggle educationally. And it's a struggle that a lot of the communities in the surrounding areas don't have to deal with. So, you know, I think we've done a pretty good job in dealing with a set of circumstances that are very, very hard to control. You can't control who comes into town. So, and we've got these specialized foster placements, as Wendy said. And I think we've done a pretty good job about providing our kids with certain difficulties, a platform to broaden their horizons and to have some kind of a productive life after school. And so I'd like to personally thank the staff and Wendy for the work that they do at West. And I didn't say I was wrong. I said I may be wrong. But from what I see, I think it's an investment in our kids. It's an investment in the kids that reside in Wareham and to provide them with some opportunities that otherwise they wouldn't have, and they'd fall through the cracks. So kudos to your staff and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Right, one second.
Dr. Sylvia, if I could add to that.
No.
Not about, not about, no, 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 not about whether you were wrong or not. But also, if you're fourteen or fifteen years old in Wareham and you're going through a difficult time, if West Wareham Academy was not there, the option would be for you to go somewhere else, whether that's Middleborough, Osterville, Born, somewhere else other than Wareham. And getting back, I will tell you after thirty-seven years, getting back from that is extremely difficult. So for students who are having trouble preventatively, West has done a wonderful job with that population of students as well. And I can, and just one more thing I'd like to comment on, and that is that this school committee, at least in the five years that I've been here, has not spent a lot of time on special education. And I think you can talk to your colleagues in many, many other towns, and much of their time is spent on how to solve problems in special education. A question earlier was how do you manage knowing that you're providing the interventions early on? Well, we do have a continuum of services in Wareham, and that's been supported by you folks as a committee as well as the superintendent, to be able to make sure that we're able to service as broad a variety of student needs as possible. And as a result of that, special education services does not come to you very often in terms of major problems there that you've dealt with. And I really give Wendy and her staff an absolute ovation for the work that they do because these students are doing wonderfully, and they're happy to be back in Wareham rather than somewhere on the South Shore or the Cape that they would have been if it wasn't there.
Well, when you keep it locally, we have control over the educational process, which we give up when they go somewhere else.
Thank you very much. Our next school improvement plan is Ms. Siemens for Minnet Forest and East Wareham Early Childhood Center. I need to keep, everyone, I need to just keep an eye on the time. Again, we have two more to go through, so I'll, don't get upset if I do cut you off. I just want to make sure that each one of the principals has an opportunity to get through their presentation. And I like that a lot.
Teach you to schedule four in one night.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I also want to thank Mary Morgan for being here beside me. We figured we would do this together since our school improvement plan does encompass both schools.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks Denise Tobin for being here, Jerry Young, Ann Cody. And also Tanya Duff is my administrative intern. So she, this is a learning process for her, so I wanted to welcome her to her first school committee meeting. So we're presenting our school improvement plan. So if our enrollment is concerned, this is what we are projecting for next year. And as I've mentioned a few meetings ago, this incoming kindergarten class is the largest class we've had yet. So so far, we have one hundred and thirty students. It's about twenty-one, twenty-six students per class. That's still keeping with the six classes. First grade, I had to move a position from second grade down to first grade to increase it to five classrooms. Hundred and eighteen students, we're looking at twenty-three, twenty-four students. Second grade, that's my smallest population. But I did take the risk of reducing that to four classes, so they have twenty-four, twenty-five in a class. Starting to get a little high, but I definitely needed to put that into first grade. Fourth grade is one of my, I'm sorry, third grade is a hundred and thirteen students, twenty-two, twenty-three in a class. Fourth grade is a bubble class, hundred and twenty-nine students. That's where we had to put the new position. And even with that new position, there are twenty-five, twenty-six students to start in September. And then fifth grade, although they're moving on, within my school, there were ninety-eight students that would be going on to the fifth grade. And I know that the teaming will be different, but based on how I would do it in the past, it would have been twenty-four, twenty-five. But I know it'll be spread out over more teams for next year. I do not include the substantially separate children in these numbers because they have their own homeroom, but we do integrate them throughout the classes as their IDP calls for. Attendance. When you look at the DESI website, two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twelve, it shows that Minnet Forest had ninety-five point three percent attendance. We always have to try to make sure we meet that ninety-five percent attendance. And the average number of days' absence was eight point two. So we do various things for attendance. We always send letters home, as required by Mass General Law, anytime a student reaches seven days' absence within a six-month period. And we follow that up regularly. We make phone calls. I love how we have this automated system that sends the calls out. We do have families that are calling us in the morning to report absences as well. And we have a supervisor of attendance, who's the guidance counselor, and she becomes involved with families who have excessive tardiness or excessive absences. And sometimes that involvement may be calls to DCF or calls or visits to the court. So it happens infrequently, but we do monitor attendance and try to make sure these students are in school because when they're not here, it impacts their education. Again, looking at the DESI website, the in-school suspension rate was one point four percent. Out-of-school suspension rate was five point four percent. It's, we were less, our numbers here are better than what the state was showing. But it's difficult to do in-school suspension because you always need to have a staff member that monitors those students, and that's not always available to do. Out-of-school suspension rate was lower than the district, and it was tied within the state. In the school improvement plan, you have, the chart came out, the little bar numbers, but it didn't transfer over to this particular template. So you have that in the plan. But basically, what we're looking at is the growth that our students are making with ELA. And we are making growth. We're looking at that fifty percent when we look at ELA. And that's what we want to make sure that we're continuing to do, is to show student growth. So for ELA and many of the categories, we were on target for showing that growth. For math, we know that we have some work to do, but we were at about forty-eight percent or so for the math in the various categories. Last year, we were below the target in math. We realize that we're trying to target that as we go forth. And that is why, one of the reasons why we had the math consultant this year, we would like to continue into next year as well. But we want to get back to, and this will come up in some other slides, about our scheduling and how much time we're devoting to math and intervention and so forth. For professional development, a lot of our PD was focused around student achievement. We had training for the teachers in the reading program. We have crisis prevention training that Ms. Rogers and I do in the district. It's not just restraint training. It's teaching techniques, how you de-escalate a student, so that we can refocus them and redirect them. Because of our kindergarten population and the fact that we have a kindergarten grant and also preschool, because they're NIAC accredited as well, we have to have CPR and first aid staff members trained. So we're in the process of doing that this week. The teacher evaluation training and the use of Teach Point also was done throughout the year. So we've gone full force into the full teacher evaluation system and using Teach Point now, getting everything, and their observations, our formative reports that we have to do, our summative reports. We had additional training for everyday math this year. And as Ms. Miranda had mentioned, everyone is doing PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. So we are starting it at the lower level, and it will continue as we go forth. And we continued the RTI support through Teachers Twenty-One. Various ways that we can meet the learning needs of our students. RTI was fully implemented this year. We have a forty-minute intervention block. Now, we know because of budget cuts and because I will potentially be losing four part-time interventionists, it doesn't wipe out the intervention program. It just decreases it. So I wanted to clarify that because I think there was maybe some confusion in the past that we were eliminating all of the interventionists, and that's not true. We're just decreasing the number of staff, which I still don't like, but I just wanted to clarify that. So we do have interventionists still that will be able to target some of those students in some of those tier-three areas. We'll still use the CARE program. Families can do the two days or the four days. It's their choice. But I love how we've expanded it to the four days a week now. And the tutoring also is no longer held by an income boundary that anybody can be in the tutoring program. We have individual student success plans, ISSPs, which means if a child has failed MCAS, we're required to have this ISP for them. And we do additional work on the standards that they need help with. And then, of course, the summer programming, literacy lab and various programs.
So I'm going to stop you there. On the data elements, questions about the data elements? Yes?
You mentioned that you're not completely removing RTI. I'd like to hear from Mr. Luzon because I thought he said that we were completely removing RTI from the Minnet School.
No, actually, to the superintendent. And then if the-
What?
I was going to, okay. I first want to see if the superintendent wants to answer it, and then if not, then he can always defer to the-
Well, I just remember from the meeting, that's what he said.
I don't recall Mr. Luzon saying that. I know when I was asked during the budget presentation, I believe that we did before the Board of Selectmen combined meeting, I thought I answered that, that just the way Joan did, that we have not eliminated RTI. RTI is still going on. We don't, the number of interventionists have been lessened at Minnet Forest.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding data elements? Yes?
The two thousand and eleven SGP of fifty, I think it was fifty-eight, was a really nice number. The drop of thirteen points is distressing. Can you think of one or two things that precipitated that drop?
For ELA or math?
I'm sorry, this is math.
Math. Well, first of all, they've changed the whole system, so we no longer have AYP. And that's why in my school improvement plan, I wanted to put our history of AYP because if you look at that, we made it several times over the years. But they went from AYP to PPI and recalculated the whole formula. So by doing that, I think that's a baseline year. I really hope that our scores this year will be going up. But we have, we don't have an intervention block as we've had in the past. We had some interventions happening. We didn't have a math coach. That's why we wanted to make sure we put that back this year because we saw that was a need, that we wanted to have, almost like the coaching model. And Mrs. Schluter was great this year with making sure our everyday math and our classroom instruction was lined up with the new Common Core standards.
I'm not sure, are you saying that a score of forty-five on the SGP does not mean that our students, on average, are not growing their math skills as fast as the average student in Massachusetts? Is that what you're saying? That does not mean that anymore?
No, we, it's just a different calculation in a way of looking at how scores are reported. It's like comparing apples and oranges right now with the way that they've recalculated and they've changed everything with PPI.
Yeah, but that's why-
And the fact that we have growth now is really important because our students are showing growth.
That's why I'm not referring to PPI, because frankly, absolute scores of less interest to me than growth. And in fact, I think the evaluation system is much more concerned with growth than absolute achievement as well. But I could be wrong, and Mrs. Rattella can feel free to correct me, but I think fifty-eight said we were, our students were growing above average, and forty-five says our students are growing below average. And those are, that is a fact. Whether they change the system, it's still a growth model. And I think I still have reason to be concerned. And it sounds like you're less concerned than I am for a variety of reasons that I don't understand.
We put a lot of focus and energy in ELA with RTI, with the training, with intervention, with interventionists. And that showed in our scores. We didn't have the same level of supports for math, and I think that's why we saw a drop.
That makes sense to me, although I remember distinctly a discussion about why we were doing RTI for ELA, and that is because I was educated about the fact that better ELA will produce better math.
But we also had to start somewhere, and you can't do RTI with both at once. We had to start with ELA. So what we want to do next year for math is have those interventions, have the teachers doing differentiated groups. And we actually have a book club that we started at Minnet this year with differentiated groupings. And we are reading a book and studying it, so to try to give the teachers more of an understanding of what differentiated instruction looks like, so they can now work with small group instruction.
Thank you.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So for summary, for student achievement, again, we did RTI. We saw in grade two, they had the most significant decrease in special education services that were needed. So we had, I think, six of our incoming second graders that are on IEPs this year. So we're starting to see some progress with that. We did purchase new reading materials for K to two. We weren't able to purchase the whole package. We purchased components of it. We would like to see additional components of the REACH program to kind of complement what we already have. Various student support programs, as I've mentioned in the past. And then we have math and reading incentive programs. So the PTA does Blast Into Books with reading. They do Math Wonders as well. That's K to five. Grade four, and maybe, Ms. Miranda, we can help you with this. We have a program called The Big Shebang, and Mrs. Antonellis was one of- We have a program called The Big Shebang, and Mrs. Antonellis was one of our teachers that started that this year. And the students, it's all on, based on their multiplication facts. And they study them and they're tested, and when they complete 100% mastery, they get to immediately call their family. And the whole class is behind them and they celebrate the fact that they've learned their math facts. And one of my students, the very first student that we have, Michael G., received a letter from Susan Gifford, the politician, so that was wonderful. I now have two classes out of my four that have 100% students that mastered their math facts. So we can talk about The Big Shebang and maybe we can, you know, have some kind of community service there. So that has been great as well. And I know Mrs. Duff is part of that testing with the students, so that has been great. If you come to Minnet Forest, we have all of their pictures up on the wall. So another way of promoting the positive and getting those math scores up there, Mr. Swat. For technology, equipment, iPads were used on one of the grade four teams, that has continued, that has been great. And for some of our students that need those challenging things and reaching the higher order skills, the iPads and what they can do with those are wonderful. And I know last year, I think it was, we had a presentation from the teacher and the students. Administrators, instructional leaders, we all used iPads for the observations that we did. Preschool staff, and I don't know if you want to speak a little bit more about this, Mary, but they also used iPads in the classroom, they were able to get them through a grant, I believe. Computers at Minnet are really old, they are just breaking down. I was able to buy two new ones this year. We hope to purchase more next year, but it is an area of need. For software, we use Study Island for math. If we can make math fun for students, they learn. Some Dog is a competition that they do, and students will be getting a certificate at our award ceremonies for participating in Some Dog. We use Lexia for reading, it's one of the interventions that we do. And Spell City has been great for our special education students. And then the teacher evaluation forms were converted from paper into the software, Teach Point. Tracking student achievement, we use Pearson Inform and we analyze the data by using that software. Community, we'd like to, or we did expand communication skills with families. There's a whole variety that you see on the screen that we've done, from principal coffees to newsletters. One thing that I did, I had an AM coffee and a PM coffee. I don't know if you've offered it during two different times of the year, that helped, but I noticed it's only from September to January that you capture the parents. The last four months, we didn't have anyone, you know, that were able to come. And I just think schedules get crazy once you get past January and all the sports seasons come up. We just had a great incoming kindergarten parent orientation. We work very hard with transitioning our preschool students into kindergarten, so they have a great first experience. I was very sad I had to miss the ice cream social this year, but my son was graduating and I had to be mom that night. Phone call, emails, it's all there. It's ways that we communicate with families. And I will say that the parents rated receiving communication from the school on the parent survey as high. They were really pleased with what we had done. Sustaining, expanding community partnerships. We always applied to Makepeace Grants, Foundation for Wayham Education. We were very fortunate that we received several this year. Nexus Martial Arts started a new leadership academy program, so we selected 16 students and three or four Fridays after school, they stay, and we're building up leadership skills. We have some students that it's really good for, that need help with leadership skills, and we have some role models in that class as well. So that has been well received. And I appreciate Steve Whittier, who's on my school council as a community rep, for starting that pilot program, and it's no cost to the family. Stop &amp; Shop has the A-plus bonus bucks program. When you sign up your Stop &amp; Shop card online, then the schools get a portion of the money. So I was able to pick up a check today for $468. So every little bit helps. Target also has their red card and schools get monies from that. And as we mentioned earlier, the local restaurants support not only what Mrs. Duff is doing, but they also help to support the Big Shebang program.
And I'm sorry, I mean, I think it's an important point that even if you don't have a student in the school system, that these two programs, Stop &amp; Shop and the Target program, it's very easy to choose a school and just a way that you, you know, you don't have to write out a check to the school. Every single purchase that you make, this is basically free money. So I just, I think it's an important point to stand that if you feel that it's important to fundraise for the schools, there's an easy way to do it without giving any money at all. So please sign up, even if you don't even have a student.
That's correct. And we have a way of getting more people, and that's coming up in the slides. But also October, my newsletter, I list all the directions on how you can do that. Sadly, they don't do it for preschool. They have a level that they start at and they don't do it for preschool programs. But that's okay, we'll share. Actually, I did share with you this year. Moving on. Expand and renovate Minnet Forest. As we know, this did not happen, so this was one of our not met goals, but going forward in the future, I want to reapply. We were so overcrowded this year, we know that's why we had to move the grade five to the middle school. So although it was defeated, I think we need to continue and move forward with this. And then make optimum use of diminished remaining resources. We know we closed Hammond, we moved the kindergarten to Minnet, we made room in the building for all of that. The gymnasium was reassigned as the interventionist program. We have the arts, but they were still on the cart. And we squeezed special education staff into as many spaces in the building as we could, sometimes under stairwells and things like that. So we're looking to make that a little bit better for them next year.
So I'll stop there for a second. Questions regarding previous year? The one question that I had is, I know that the statement that you made that we want to reapply to get on the list again, why haven't we yet applied? I mean, I know that it's, I don't know when it happens, but we talked about this year applying, or did we talk about going for the vote first and then applying, or applying and then going for the...
We talked about going for the vote and then...
And then applying?
Yep.
All right, so then the question is, I think, from this committee, and something that we should talk about, you know, at every single election, do we put that on as a debt exclusion?
And I think, you know, with the new administration coming in, maybe other people have other ideas too. It's nothing new, but maybe some new ideas, maybe people have had experiences and what worked well for them.
Yeah. Dr. Rich, how many town votes did it take before the one for the middle school got passed?
We had to go to the ballot box three times and we were receiving an 89% reimbursement.
Okay. So there's nothing wrong with us every single year putting it on the ballot box?
That's crazy.
Or every two years? Okay, thank you.
Just to Dr. Benovich's remarks, was that, was it advertised that way or did it just end up that way, that we got the 89%?
No, it was advertised.
We knew going into it, we were going to get 89%.
Yes, sir.
And it took three times to, wow.
And like this one, it passed the first time through town meeting, but at the ballot box, it was difficult. And in fact, standing out in front of Town Hall, passing out literature on Saturday afternoon and talking to people, there were the opposition standing across, passing out information, asking for it to fail.
Wow.
But we keep trying.
And these days, we're looking at, you know, 60%?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So for the goals we're working on for next year, student achievement, we know we have to target literacy, math, tracking our student achievement, and still working with our after-school programs. So for literacy, we're restructuring the RTI model. As I mentioned before, we still have interventionists, we just have to change it a little bit. We want to look at increasing the ELA time, going back to the 90 minutes that we had before, still having the intervention time. We need to purchase the reading material for grades three and four. We did it for K to 2, now we need to look at the grades three to four. And for preschool, they want to implement their building language for literacy in all the classrooms. For math, we need to make sure the teachers are providing differentiated small group instruction, so they'll do their core lesson, their big group lesson, and then breaking out these students into small groups based on the need that they may have and based on the skills. And if we still have that math consultant position, that will be coming in and working with the teachers as well and having that feedback about skills and standards and so forth. Also with math, we have our various assessments that gives us data and where we need to move our students. We don't have an RTI model of the interventionists, but we can still do small group instruction and target the skills that the students need. For tracking student achievement, we're switching over to Edwin Analytics. I have several staff members that have gone to a lot of the trainings. I know Mrs. Murphy and Mrs. Duff have been heavily involved with that. They've done a lot of webinars, so we'll be able to create reports using Edwin. They can create assessments right in Edwin, and they can pull up the information, and the teachers can do this, and it's, everything is like on one page, so it's really user-friendly. Again, the teacher evaluation system, going forth, student growth would be part of that, so we'll be looking at that. CARE tutoring, that's going to continue. And one thing we're borrowing from another school is maybe piloting another CARE program, because we always have students on a waiting list, so if we can do a fee program, and I think that's what you do at DECA, so we want to borrow their idea, and if families are willing to do a fee-based program to have more students take that, you know, advantage of that, then we would try that. We want to decrease the discipline referrals, and this is what we've all talked about with PBIS. We want to see at least a minimum decrease of 5% of referrals. We want to start with the basics next year. We wanted to start as far as walking the students in the hallway, how they get into line in the cafeteria, just the basics of structure and promoting the positive, continuing with the contracts, continuing with open circle, and celebrating our successes and being as positive as we can, starting with a brand-new vision statement for Minnet Forest for next year, and really focusing on positive. For preschool, they want to increase their student knowledge of symbols, colors, shapes, numbers, and letters. They can do that by various classroom activities, lessons, teaching materials, games, songs, and so forth. Technology, we know we need to upgrade computer equipment for our teachers. Some of the teachers can even get on to Teach Point because their software on the computer is so old. So we need to purchase new computers. I'd like to be able to do at least five with the money we have in the budget. If there's local businesses that maybe after three years, they look to purchase new ones, we would love to have a shot at the donations that they could give us, and we'd have our tech department work with us on that. Preschool has the iPads, they're going to use that with students for math and literacy. And they would also like to track their student achievement with iPad, and they have a special program, Teaching Strategies. It's a software program that they would be using in order to do that.
Good.
Resources, we are alleviating the overcrowding by moving the grade five onto the middle school, so we're going to be reorganizing some of the classrooms again at Minnet. One of the things we'll be doing is taking the second grades and moving them upstairs. So we have grades two, three, and four upstairs now. It allows us some space to kind of move things around. We need to get the second gymnasium used back, not only for our students, but for the community. So the interventionists will be coming out of the gym, going into the library, and then it's a domino effect because it makes the special ed teachers that need a space. So I'm working with the custodians on that and the various staff members on reorganizing that. Want to try to keep grade levels together if we can. Utilize community resources and support programs and funding. We still want to partner with WCTV. I know we have, Ms. Kuklinski has a project that they were recording a session, so they want to be able to do that next year. Use WCTV to post notices or events and meetings and so forth. Use our local media, they've been great about if they can't come to the school for pictures, we'll send the information to them, and they've been great about getting it posted online. And I know Wayham Korea just worked with some of my teachers on lessons and how you do those things, so that'll be coming up. And then using the various grant sources that we can for the extra money. And preschool has the Reading is Fundamental program, so the students get three books a year, and that's possible because of the Dick Maloney Foundation, that gives the money that we need to purchase the books. Community, I think this is one of the things that we do well at Minnet Forest, building community partnerships. We have the word of the month, Stop &amp; Shop, that we've mentioned. We have guest readers that come in during November to read to our students. We have volunteers, whether they're parents or whether they're senior volunteers, retired people. We're in the middle of field days right now, and we know that we have adults that need to go to the bathroom, so we have a bathroom monitor. So Ms. Rose is my monitor. So she comes and she has her knitting or she has her books, and she's the one that's signing in and out of the parents and keeps track of them. So I appreciate that. That's five days' worth of volunteering, all day long. You can't, you know, those hours that she gives is wonderful. Book swap, I know we've come before you with the book swap idea. We have the carts now, the children are borrowing books from the book cart, and they're reading books and they're donating books. The Wayham Lodge of Alks donates dictionaries every year to our grade three students, we appreciate that. We'll continue at Nexus Martial Arts, we'd like to expand that program. And because we have the gymnasium back, we'll have more community use for that. And then for preschool, they want to have more families participate in their literacy events, enrichment programs, and then again, the RIF book distribution. Questions?
Thank you.
Questions? Yes?
This was your first year of all full-day kindergarten, correct?
Well, we had, it was the first year of no tuition. We've had full day in the past, but we did have half-day sessions, like two half-day sessions.
You may be anticipating my question. People were eligible for full-day kindergarten with no tuition, and if they wanted to pick up their child halfway through, they could.
Correct.
How was, what are the numbers?
Two.
Two out of 100 and...
118 students.
Okay, so would you describe the program as a success and parents were grateful to have no tuition, full-day kindergarten?
And going forth next year, without having that opt-out program, because that was just a transition year, we can really look at our schedule, because knowing that students may have been leaving half-day, it affected when they could have lunch, when they could have their specials. So now we can better schedule the kindergarten day, and they may be able to have first lunch this year instead of having the second lunch, so that plays into it.
So part two of that question is, do you expect the benefits of this to roll over into the academic results in first grade?
Absolutely, because the students are there. I love the fact that we have part-time parents, because when you walk into those classrooms, the parents are sitting with those students and they're working with the students. They're not just walking around, they're not seeing what the teachers are doing, they are actively engaged in what is going on in those classrooms.
And finally, just, this is a detail, but on the very first page, you basically, K of this year became grade one of next year. Are, how precise is that? Are you anticipating no attrition, no growth? You just literally transferred the numbers from K to one?
I did, the numbers as they are, we may have one or two that we're still looking at retention, but it won't, that's another benefit of RTI, we don't have the numbers of retention that we've had in the past.
I wasn't so much thinking retention as attrition or growth. You're not anticipating particularly one or the other, or if you do have some of it, you expect it to offset?
For the student growth?
Yes.
For K, no, I think...
No, all grades.
Oh, depends on the grade level and the numbers and what we're...
The in and out migration, I think Jeff was talking about, and it normally balances out.
It normally balances.
It normally does, but it seems this year we've had more students moving in than out. In fact, I have two new students starting Monday and one new student starting tomorrow. Yes, they're still coming.
Okay.
But that's okay, because I actually had that question, would it benefit students to start this late in the year? And I said absolutely, because even though there may be two or three weeks left of school, it gives us a quick snapshot of the students, they are introduced to their peers, and maybe it'll develop a friendship over the summer. So I said absolutely enroll them.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, very, very much.
Keep it moving.
Next up, we have...
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
The DeCA's Elementary School.
Yeah, could you turn the mic to him? I know I can hear you, but I'm having trouble on the whole thing.
Sorry.
Next up, we have DeCA's Elementary, and Mrs. Panarisi, welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to thank my school council here. We have Ms. Higgins, Ms. Baznet, and Mr. Yuber here with me this evening. Thank you for coming and supporting us.
And Ms. Panarisi, you're just going to have to release...
She'll be directing me.
Louder.
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 Got it. Okay, so here's my photo, and you know I love it, so you know I'm always going to use the photo.
Yes.
I just love this thing. I'm going to, I have mastered a Windows-based machine, I think, this evening. I practiced. No, I must have not. Okay. So I started off with the enrollment pieces. And it was important this year to look at the enrollment because we do have that transition of the fifth grade moving to the middle school. And so we looked at the 2012-2010 enrollment data, but that was as of the beginning of the year. The actual student enrollment at DeCA's right now is a 687. And like Miss Seaman's school, we're still getting in students. We seem to have a run on twins at DeCA's. We're getting lots of twins in. So, but over the years, from when I first started, I looked at, you know, how many students we had. I started, I remember my first year was 714 students. So there is a decline. And it was kind of unnerving. And I said, well, where is this decline coming from? You know, is it because there was low birth rate? Are people leaving the school? What exactly is happening to the school? So I investigated the students that were leaving. And there's a lot of transition in our school. We have a high population of what we call at-risk students and high-need students. So that brings a lot of the transition with it. There are 41 students who left, 47 that came back in. And it was not due to what we call the brain drain. It was not due to parents, the majority was not due to parents being dissatisfied with the elementary school or the education that their children were getting at DeCA's. It was mostly because people were moving out of state, people were moving in from different countries, and people were moving in from different areas. Mostly, I have to be honest with you, from the Brockton, New Bedford, and Fall River areas. So that is what our enrollment changes look like. Attendance and indicators. When we look at the indicators, there's a couple of things that we really want to pay attention to. And the first one is, you know, when we look at the overall attendance rate, which is a healthy attendance rate, we do have a procedure in place where we call and we have parents come in for meetings on tardies and excessive attendance. So that really has worked for us. And we make it a point to assist parents, not just have them in, but what can we do to help get your child to school on time or get your child to be in school? The in-school suspension rate is a little bit higher than I would like. The out-of-school suspension is higher than I'd like. But I do have three district programs at the school, lot of high need, and it just runs its course. Much like, I have the same exact program as the West Academy, but it is in DeCA's and it's for the younger students. So you saw the suspension rates there. We do have a lot of behavioral issues that need to be addressed in that manner. We try not to, but sometimes that's, you need to do that. The retention rate is also high. And so I did a little bit of investigation on that. And I found out that most of my retentions, and I think there were 11 last year, nine of them were from kindergarten. And what happens in the kindergarten area is that, last year especially because it was a pay-for kindergarten on the full day, if parents wanted to take advantage of that and their children were on the cusp of that cutoff date, they could. With the idea that, you know, I'm just going to keep my child, rather than put my child in daycare, I'm going to give them that nice head start. They come in and you can place your child in the kindergarten full day, and then the next year, you receive that for free as part of it, when you request to retain the student. Also, we changed the date of incoming cutoff, which has a lot to do with the retention rate. But most of the retentions are coming from kindergarten. This year, we're down to seven. Couple of them are parent requests, and a couple of them are on the cusp. And so there's a couple of reasons why that is going down. Number one, we're really working on the RTI process to make sure our students are gaining the knowledge that they need. And also, I think that parents are taking advantage of the free tuition and kids are really getting a full day of education. Because like the Minnet School, we did have half-day programs as well. One of the things that you should look at the indicators is that over the past 10 years, 10 years ago, the free and reduced lunch at DeCA's was 31.6. The report, as of October 1st, that you're seeing on the slide, says 54. And if you looked at it today, it's 57. The state looks at our school in a category called High Needs, where they take low income, they take children of special needs, and they kind of group them together. And they say, well, what percentage of the kids that go to DeCA's are considered high needs? That percentage of students is almost 60%. So when we look at 2002 for the 31% low income, and then we look at 2012 and 13, and we're seeing 57, you can see that there is a shift in the population. And so we have to shift the way that we teach and the services that we provide our kids. Because it's a different type of student population. And you, they come with different needs. And so we need to address those needs and make sure kids are ready to learn. That all takes resources. Whenever your free and reduced lunch goes up, it's about one and a half to two times the amount of money, okay, to adequately educate a child of, into that category as it is for regular ed students or students that don't have that high-risk category. So we're kind of battling a little bit. So it's kind of frustrating in a way because we're closing the gap, but then they're giving me a gap. Because I keep increasing every single year. So you work on your students and you make sure you're closing the gap, but then that achievement gap that's correlated to that low income keeps increasing every single year. I mean, it's well over that 25 percentage points in that 10-year span. So it is an uphill battle. It is closing, and it's not dismal. We're doing it. But it's difficult when you look at the PPI and you look at the CPI, and I'm going to get to that piece next. So when we look at ELA, which was really our target, our strategic and target focus, because the math scores the year before were so solid and so strong, we felt that what we were doing was really good. Our kids were responding very well to the EDM. Everything was fantastic. And I'm not going to say that we paid more attention to ELA, but it was ELA that we really needed to look at our instruction. We needed to look at the services that we were providing our kids. And the RTI process really helped us to do this. So when we look at it, we're seeing no change, no change, decline, above the target, and then no change. Well, our no change is less than the state's no change. So if the state average is 0.5 and ours is 0.2, then we're doing better than what the state's average is. But still, it's not good enough. It's not good enough, and it's not where we need to be. In math, it's no secret that we're below the target. The year prior to this was huge. And if you really wanted to take those two years and average them, it doesn't look so dismal. But here again, there's some ideas that I have that perhaps maybe, you know, we needed to look at an alignment. We didn't have coaches. We didn't have a full handle on the Common Core or what it took or how to teach the Common Core. So there's a host of different reasons why that happened. And it didn't just happen for us. If you use the park and you go through and you look at the other districts, a lot of the other districts found themselves in the same position as we did. So we weren't alone in this misery. Many of the districts the year before had really done a great job in mathematics as we did. And then the following year, there was a dip. The science, the standards that we needed to incorporate for science, the higher-order thinking, the vocabulary, the inferencing, the problem-solving, all that takes place in science. We didn't do as well as science that we wanted to. With the new science standards that just came out and the alignment that I'm anticipating, it should help us to focus on each individual grade level, what the instruction should be, and what that instruction looks like inside the classroom. So that's where I think professional development is going to have to come in, and the training for teachers, and then the monitoring of that training. Because as you know, that which gets monitored gets done. Here's where I really feel that double rainbow over DeCA's is pictured. One of our target and strategic target areas throughout the entire school was to ensure that students that were achieving at the higher level could continue to do so and be challenged. And so when we looked at what the state had told us about our instruction and how they didn't feel as though there was a lot of rigor, they didn't feel there was a lot of students being challenged. I have to take a step back because I'm pretty much a data girl. And the state said, you know, for DeCA's, you need to have, you know, 3.4 is your baseline. And we got 8.2. And so we got the extra bonus points for that. We got extra bonus points all the way down in six categories of ELA for improving the top tier of students. The top tier of students cannot pass the MCAS unless they are exposed to the rigorous instruction. They didn't come out of the womb with that knowledge. They had to be exposed to the instruction, and they had to absorb that instruction, and they had to be assessed on that instruction. So to me, that validated that what was going on at DeCA's was that we were meeting the needs of students that could achieve at the higher level. That was the case not only in ELA, but it was also the case in math, an area where we didn't perform as better as much as we should have. Yet we still managed to get those points. And here again, it's not as dramatic. It's 10.8, and then you get 14.5. But we surpassed what the baseline was in a very good way. So Wayham students are achieving, but we're achieving in what I call polar opposite areas. We have students that are entering into a district, we have a dramatic change in the socioeconomic population. Our higher-level students are being exposed to rigorous instruction, and they're performing, and they're doing an excellent job. And the data proves that. So grade three is always a coin toss because there's no growth rate that you run to to get to see how grade three is doing. So I have to compare the CPIs, which I don't really like to do, but I did in this particular case. Now, these are for two different cohorts, which means there's two different types of kids. In 2012, approximately, I'm going to say 30% of the students were identified as special needs. So approximately one every, one out of every three children that picked up a pencil to answer the MCAS test had some type of special need. Yet in ELA, we managed to raise that CPI two points. We didn't make the PPI, but somehow or another, we raised the CPI. So I really like CPI because that more benefits, that benefits us. I like that. That works for me. Now, in math, it doesn't work. And that's a sad thing. And again, there's been a lot of thought, a lot of sleepless nights into why this math. And I think we have a handle on this now. I will say that I believe that the Common Core standards and that year and a half of increased knowledge automatically happens when you implement the Common Core. That doesn't necessarily mean that the grade level before you has prepared students for that year and a half jump. You know, what was the times tables in the fourth grade is now times tables in third. And it's mastery of skill. And it's the fluency that they're looking for. They're not looking for us to problem-solve with simple-digit, single-digit multiplication. That is something that has to be ingrained, it needs to be fluent, in order for students to problem-solve at the higher-order thinking level. So math is an issue. Again, different cohort of students, but this is a cohort of students that, if you look at the odds, shouldn't be that good, but they did do a good job.
So I'm going to just stop you there because I know that there's three more slides on data, but let me just see if there's any questions based on that. Any questions? Yes?
I'm not a particular fan of PPI, CPI, AYP. I am a fan of SGP.
Yes.
I am also hearing a common thread that our teachers are disproportionately challenged by people who have not started with Mary Morgan's program and are just, you know, jumping in at two weeks before the year ends from who knows where. And you have to find a way to get them up to standards. I understand that completely. But the SGP is supposed to deal with that. Because if these kids know almost nothing, then we're only comparing them to other kids who know almost nothing.
Exactly.
So I still think we have to focus on SGP.
I agree. And I think the next couple of charts are going to show that. And I absolutely agree with that too. Because I really think that if you chase the CPI and the PPI and you don't make it, it's like you worked a whole year. But if, when you take a look at the DeCA's growth charts and just, if we take a look at the whole school right now, and I believe this is the ELA growth chart. In 2011, our growth rate was 43. In 2012, it was 54. That's a substantial increase. That means students are learning, and they're learning at a good rate. So that's something I feel proud of. Because I feel as though that 54 from a 43 is a good growth rate.
I completely agree. But my problem is, I suspect that your colleague over at Minnet felt pretty good with their 58, and then oops, it became a 45.
Yeah, I got that slide too.
So there needs to be a pattern of successful growth in order for absolute achievement to be occurring. And in math, in this district, that seems to be a struggle. And to what do you attribute that struggle with the math SGP in general?
Well, I believe in math fluency. I don't believe that children should have to think about their math facts in addition to subtraction, multiplication, and division. I believe they should be automatic. And that's just my own personal belief, and that's what you're asking me. When students don't have those tools in their pockets to solve higher-order thinking or problem-solving math questions, they have to use all of their energy and all of their time and probably most frustrated with trying to do the very basic mathematic functions. So the mastery of skill, which the Common Core and NCTM both propose, of the math facts in all four operations in the early grades builds the foundation of math that children are going to need in the upper grades. Having been a seventh-grade math teacher and a sixth-grade math teacher and taught elementary summer school, I can tell you that there were seventh-grade students and sixth-grade students that did not know their math facts.
Let me, let me back up and just ask a final question so the chairman doesn't get upset with me.
Already there.
Too late?
Go ahead.
Too late? When you and your instructional leaders go into, to do these observations, and you see math being taught, are you satisfied with the quality of instruction of the math in particular in your school?
It would depend on the time of year that you ask that question. At the beginning of the year, absolutely not. Absolutely not. And I made that quite a point.
Thank you. All set. Thank you for your indulgence.
I have a quick question.
Yep.
And this is for all of the principals. We've had some mention about suspensions, in-school suspension, out-of-school suspensions and so forth. And, you know, handling a problem expeditiously and a suspension is the remedy, then I'm all for it. But is there a, is there a policy about reinstating or having the kid re-enter, the child re-enter? Is there an automatic parent conference? Is there, is there, is there a?
Reentry meeting.
There, there are?
Is that automatic? That has to happen?
There's two things. And I don't know how it's done at Minnet. Usually, we have a reentry meeting if it's more than a certain time. But don't forget, there's a meeting that takes place right then and there at the suspension day.
No, I'm talking about the reentry meeting is with whom?
So the reentry meeting is usually either with myself or the assistant principal and the parent and the child.
So the parent has to come in for reentry?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Continue.
So then I looked at each grade individually. Again, here we are with 56 on the growth for ELA, which is, again, a targeted area for DeCA's. Because the writing piece? again, a targeted area for Deccus because the writing piece was a real challenge for us. Mathematics, not good. Same thing with grade five. Grade five, ELA fifty-four. And the growth rate for math was forty-five. Not terribly shabby, but not where we would like it. I believe it's forty to fif- forty-five.
Fifty is average growth.
Mm-hmm.
And it's ten, ten point differential each side.
Thank you. So rather than harp on the negative, because I know it's there, I'm not ignoring it. We're addressing it in a very strategic manner. It was not the hyper-focus last year because the gains were too big. And we knew if we kept on doing what we were doing and kept on the steady road, that it would be okay. And that did not happen. And so again, I can go back to the preparedness that we had in trying to help children learn that math fluency. But when we look at the whole school CPI, and I talked about this, we're better than the state. Down on the whole school math, but up on the ELA, which was the strategic targeted area of intervention. And if we average the math growth, it's not as bad. It doesn't look as bad, but they don't do that. But I needed to see what it would look like, just to look at the data and just to try to do a comparison. And we are performing at the advanced level. And it's not just a few students, it's students in all six subcategories. So that led me to claim that the instructional rigor is there in certain subject areas. The improvement target for ELA has been met. And the grade four long composition writing was successful. And what that took was binders that myself and ILS made of prompts. And we gave them to the grade four teachers. And grade four teachers went through the prompts with their students and turned in their long compositions. And they did this throughout the entire year so that we could individually and collaboratively grade the students' long compositions. We weren't waiting to the last minute to see where students really truly needed the intervention. So it was, it was actually looked at, student work was looked at by more than one person. And then it's my anticipation that the science standards for next year, as well as the new technology standards, will be integrated throughout the curriculum. So the AP category is growing. And most of the grade level needs improvement is shrinking. But the warning category is growing. And again, when we look at the different type of student indicators and we look at the drastic changes in free and reduced lunch over the past ten years and even from last year to this year, that creates the gap. That is correlated, it's research driven, it's not an opinion, it's there. So while we're making gains in one area, the bottom area is increasing. Because the student population in that area is increasing. Because all children are exposed to the instruction. How we get children to that level or near close to that level of where we want them to be is going to require a different type of teaching. And so I'm looking at some training in cultural proficiency. How we address students of poverty. Because we need to start really thinking about that. Because that's really what's before us. And children of poverty grow up differently, they develop differently and they have different learning needs. We as a staff have to learn what those needs are and change our own instructional beliefs so that the needs of these children are met. That's something that has to be done. So when we look at the diverse needs, more hands-on, more technology. They have a great tech, tech tool now that it taps, attaches to an iPad and it's a microscope. And so students are able to put a microscope, it doesn't even look like a microscope, it looks like a little mini camera. But it enlarges what children are seeing on the iPad. It's really neat. So I'm looking into that. They're not very expensive. But that can make the difference between engaging students in their learning and not engaging students in their learning. And it doesn't take a whole lot of money to integrate technology into the learning. What it takes is talent and instruction. Review, constant review, because once we align something, we constantly go through it again and revisit it to make sure it's where it's supposed to be. And all of the alignments in math, ELA, science and technology, make sure everything is there. Use our common assessments, use our assessments to make sure that we are having the right instruction that we need. We need some Common Core benchmarks, more of them. And I think we've solved some of that problem for next year. We're looking to increase the Reach for Reading Program in grades three and four hopefully so that the entire school has the same reading program, core series. That would be helpful. And we need some supplemental resources as far as Common Core goes for the EDM series. And it would be nice to have a resource room for students with the highest need. Because some of my IEPs do still have pull-out, they're not full inclusion. It's really difficult to try to meet those kids' needs. I don't want to have to meet those needs by saying, okay, well, you get intervention. These are the kids that need extra. They get intervention, they get the regular instruction and then they should get extra. So if we want to really close that gap, that's kind of where I have to be. And the intervention kits, there's two that I need and they're, they're quite pricey. And I'm hoping that we will have funding to be able to purchase those. So the goals I put down, again, very specific, very targeted. Minimum of ninety minutes, Common Core balanced literacy with research evidence-based core curriculum series. So as a district, that is the level that we are, everything that we use has to be research and evidence-based. And we, our reading series is and our math series is, so we're good with that. We just have to make sure that any resources that we use have to align to these series and they also have to meet that same criteria. We have the Edwin Project, which is taking all of our data and putting it together. We get to look at that and also the development of some benchmarks, which have already been done using Edwin. I mean, we asked for benchmarks and it was like, two days later, I think it was one of the ILS over at mine, it had all of these benchmarks for all of the grades because they have a drop-down menu and you can just pick. It was fantastic. And we need to use an expanded vocabulary. There is some with the Reach program, it's already built in. But we need to take it out and we need to use it because there are some students that should be able to have that. All students should be exposed to that expanded vocabulary. Some will master it, some will not. But still, the exposure needs to be there. And then the tutoring and care in summer programs. The summer regression for students of high need is huge. We can start really kind of looking at that as a school. We really do need a elementary summer school because the regression is so high with children of high need. That they come in in September and you have a loss. It would be nice to come in and not have that much of a loss. And then we do have the STEAM program, which is that fee-based program that we talked about, the CARE. And of course, the RTI. And we're looking forward to the PBIS to help us with the suspension and behavioral needs of the school. And the math, again, the structuring conditions in the school need to provide seventy-five minutes of math instruction and not sixty. And we need to look for mastery of skill of those Common Core standards at every single grade level. And we also need to make sure that every grade level gets an extra forty minutes of intervention that is aligned with real-time instruction in the classroom. And again, the same with the Edwin. And we do have an extra math incentive program, Math Fact Hall of Fame, that Ms. Bazanet has piloted for us. It's fantastic. Kids are announced every single day over the intercom and they are given an award. Their picture and their certificate goes up on the Math Facts Wall of Fame. The whole D-card is full. I don't think we have an extra bulletin board anymore on our last one. Kids love this program, adults love this program and we're so proud of the kids that make those achievements. That is all based on that math fluency that we talked about, those four operations. And it is technology-driven. As always, the highlight is the improved classroom instruction. That's really where it all begins. We need to improve that. We need to help our staff with their grading. So what looks like maybe, and we use the, the one, two or three. What may look like a one for me might be a two or three for somebody else. And we all need to get on the same page vertically so that kids are having the same type of standards that they have to meet at each grade level. We need to really look at our data. I have some great data people in my building and they do a fantastic job. But I need more people to look at that data in the same way. And so it's train the trainer. I'm hoping that my teachers will train other teachers how to do that. The Tuesday meeting time for PD, continue with that. The observations, the walkthrough and the new teacher evaluation tool. And the cultural proficiency professional development. And then the measures that I'll use are on the left side. They're also contained in my school improvement plan. The new science and technology standards. Science and social studies with Common Core is integrated throughout the curriculum. And I'm trying to also make it a point that the technology standards should be met throughout the curriculum. We already have an iPad. I've talked about the microscopes. We have a, a large amount of document cameras in our school. And that just brings to life any book. So the resources that we're able to provide our students, we can get a book from the library, put it under the document camera and then every child has access to that book. It's amazing what document cameras can do. And I'd like to expand the iPad usage to other grade levels. And of course, the integration of science into all areas of the curriculum. I did speak with my specialists today and looked at a plan that perhaps the specialists could do units of study with different grade levels and focus what they're doing during that time of specialist time with the actual grade level teachers. And that might constitute that students will have a minimum of one day a week for each specialist, but they may have two of the same specialists each week so that they can get that unit of learning in during that six to eight week time span. And school safety, the events of this year have prompted all of us, I saw the results in our parent surveys and our, our staff surveys, everybody is concerned about safety. So we need to make this, we had a fire drill today, it was a minute and a half, very successful, so that was good. But I did see that some teachers still couldn't distinguish what is a, you know, a stay put in place and what is an actual, you know. So we need to practice that. And I'm looking and asking the Wareham Fire Department, the Wareham Police Department to assist me in that. To help the school to be able to teach the teachers exactly what the differences are and to have some contingency plans in place. One of the things that we saw today is that, you know, with the new trains going through and even though they're going through on the weekends, we still hear the trains once or twice during the day at the school. So if there's an exit by the trains, is it the best idea to have the fire drill exits that have always been there behind the school? Or is it best to have the children move over to the playing field? It's a few extra steps, but it's probably a safer area for them. And then we need to conserve fuel and utility at Deccus. We have had a little bit of a glitch this year and I, it will take me probably the whole summer to find out where it is. I need to compare every single month from last year to this year. But the costs have risen considerably. Too much so, not just a little, so it calls for our attention. So at the beginning of next year, I've asked Mr. Palladino to help me with this because he's, really is very successful in this area. So I've asked Mr. Palladino to help me make my school as efficient as, as he has made the high school and he's agreed, agreed to help me with that. And that is it.
Thank you very much. Questions? Additional questions? Yes, Mike?
Good evening, Mrs. Panerisi.
Good evening.
About that train, it interrupted the spelling bee today with the horn. But on, on page ten of, of your, your.
Improvement plan?
Yeah. What caught my attention, you mentioned, you know, you lost some teachers in, in grade four especially.
Could you speak a little louder, please?
Sorry, you, you mentioned you lost some teachers in grade four especially.
I did.
And I think you only, you only retained one of them out of the six and it says.
I'm sorry, that's my error. I did retain two, but one, one came in later.
Okay, okay. But, but did, you retained two, so the other, the other four, were, were they all K to two teachers that replaced them? Can you get in a second?
No, what I did, because grade four is the killer year for MCAS. And you really can't have, the rigor is so much higher in grade four. That is the, that is that line that you cross it, it, on MCAS. And in actual content area is grade four. Everything seems to, to move up. I moved grade three teachers to grade four because I had seasoned grade three teachers. I moved them to grade four because that's where the need was. I moved some seasoned second grade teachers to grade three. One of which was a reading specialist to try to prevent that third grade failure of reader. And then my fifth grade unfortunately took the hit with the teachers not really having a lot of experience at those grade levels.
All right, so I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna read directly from here and let me know if it's incorrect at this time. "All of the transferred teachers were placed into grade level slots that were empty. Unfortunately, their work experience was at the K to two or specialist class level." So that's.
That's true.
But you moved grades three up to four, right?
I did.
So it wasn't all getting into second grade?
The teachers that came to me are MCAS teachers.
Okay.
So what do you do? And you've got your most highest MCAS year. So you either take fifth grade to move them down, I really couldn't do that because my fifth grade was blown out of the water. Or you take the third grade and you move them up. And I actually brought this problem to my cohort to ask because there's no win.
Yeah.
There, there was no, there was no win. I needed seasoned teachers in grade four. And I got them.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, I had to remove them from another MCAS year to do it. There was nobody left in fifth.
Okay. And I just, I just wanted to point out, I mean, obviously, you know, I have a lot more familiarity with your school because my son goes there since last year. And I just wanted to commend you on a couple of things while I'm here. I noticed in your school that, that you're really good at recognizing achievement. You know, it's kind of when it's sort of unpopular to do so, where sort of like everybody's supposed to like not win or lose. You know what I mean? And, and I'll give you a few examples that, that impressed me as a parent at that school. You, you have this night where you recognized a kid that, any of the kids that, that placed advanced in MCAS. You didn't have to do ELA and math, if you placed advanced in either one of them, you got recognized that night. And I, I thought that was really special. There's a lot of kids that saw you that night and I was impressed with them. I, I obviously love that you do the spelling bee and there's, there's winners and losers in that spelling bee and some feelings are hurt, you know, but, but they learn from it. And I like how you do the Junior Honor Society too. Recognizing that, that achievement as well. And I didn't see that before you came to that school. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I, I really have to reach out to my staff, who was also very supportive of that. Mr., Mr. Fitzgerald and my staff for the co-chairs of the Honor Society. And I think that I have to thank Ms. Miranda for helping me get back to that, the MCAS awards. And that was very well received by parents. And I think that, that children who really have worked so hard, they really did. They deserve to be recognized and I have a feeling that this year we'll have even more.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, you add something?
Yes. Two things, one quickly. What is an MCAS teacher? I've never heard of that as an adjective before.
An MCAS teacher is a teacher that teaches an MCAS grade. For example, we have MCAS in grades three.
I understand that. So that's all you meant?
That's all I meant.
Okay.
Not like somebody who is. That's all I meant, not like somebody who's like...
Second question. I learned recently at the middle school, from Mrs. LaSorsa, that following, there's a term for this, and I forget what it was, following your students from six to seven or seven to eight, whatever that term is...
Looping.
Looping, thank you, yes, that's what it was, looping. She felt that that was a significant advantage in the educational experience for her kids. Do we do looping as a standard practice, and if we don't, why don't we?
We used to do it at the Deccus School, I believe, between grades one and two, and then they, and four and five, and then they stopped. This year, I guess you could say I looped, because grade-three teachers went to grade four, and the research does support that, it's about six months extra growth and less of a deterioration in student learning.
So rather than it being an exception, which you felt you needed to do to optimize the MCAS results, shouldn't we make it the standard practice?
I think what happens is that there are two things that happen. First of all, you have to match the students with the right teacher, because what you're doing is you're committing a student to be with that teacher for two years, and if it's not a very happy relationship, it can be devastating. And when you move within those looping groups, it kinda loses the whole effect. I'll just give you an example from my own personal experience, I had one of my children in a looping situation, and my daughter sailed right through it, absolutely wonderful. My son, however, it wasn't a very good relationship, and so I opted to pull him out. That does happen sometimes. So I think if the parent is all for it, and we've really taken a lot of care to match the learning styles of students to the right type of teacher, then I think it can be very successful.
Thank you.
Any other final thoughts?
Thank you, Christine, for what you do. I've talked a little bit about it, and I'm not an elementary expert, but I know enough about education, and I've studied enough about education, to know that some of the things that I throw out there are not necessarily crazy, although some people think I'm crazy. I still believe that we've gotta look long and hard at specialization, especially in mathematics. And I just think that, you know, we're missing the boat in not having trained specialists in mathematics at the elementary level. We need trained, highly-trained mathematical, math teachers at the elementary level, in grades two, three, four, whatever the case may be. Because generalists, they're well-meaning, they really mean well, we're putting so much on their plate right now, in terms of being a generalist. So I know we did a little work with it, I don't know where it is right now, but I personally believe the specialization, especially in mathematics and science, and that's where they're going in all these academies and so forth. So it wasn't, it's not just me, I mean, there is a school of thought that says that when you highly specialize in these subject areas, even at the elementary level, that the kids show incredible growth. Second thing I wanna say is that both at mine and at Deccus, I think that you've got some incredibly dedicated people. I think the mere fact that we're showing growth at those two schools, based on the fact that we haven't even recovered from 2011 budget money, next year, we will still not have reached 2011, the money that was spent in education in Wareham. So given the fact that we're literally going backwards in terms of funding public education, and yet we're showing growth at the elementary level, in my opinion, is a tremendous tribute, not only to the teachers, but to the administrators, and I say thank you.
Thank you. One of the ideas about having trained specialists, I'd like to respond to, Dr. Sylvia, and I kinda think of these crazy ideas, too. We have trained specialists, we have them at the high school. I think where we have to look is, okay, so we don't have money, does that mean we stop learning or stop getting professional development? How do we tap the high school teachers and match them up with elementary teachers? It doesn't cost anything, it's time. So how do you do that? You know, I know when the high school teachers came to the middle school, it was, it was a nice, it was nice, and because the teachers were so open, because we were so vulnerable, because we knew we needed the help, and we needed the content area growth, and the high school teachers are really very kind to us, and we learned a lot, and we learned a lot, and they became peers. I'd like to see that happen at the elementary school, because I know from being in that experience, that it was very positive, and I learned a lot, and so I think that's something that we need to look at.
And then the other thing, the third thing, I know I don't wanna pull on the meeting, but I've been relatively quiet tonight. And my colleague here is gonna raise her eyebrows. Where in the Stone Age when it comes to technology right now? You know, I have, you know, I know they make fun of it...
Hallelujah! I'm sorry, this is amazing.
I bet that he's saying it.
I know, that's what I mean.
It's pretty bad when he says it.
I say it to make jokes, and I do it just to be funny, but you know, the bottom line is, I'm seeing what these other schools have, in terms of technology in the classroom. We're backward the Flintstones, and it is, it is amazing what that technology can produce, particularly in math and science. And, you know, I'm working in schools now that have cabinets full of laptops, thirty laptops in a cabinet in every room. Every single solitary room has got a cabinet with thirty laptops in it. Think about that for a minute. There isn't a room in this particular, this happens to be a middle school, there isn't a classroom in this middle school that doesn't have a cabinet with thirty laptops, all programmed, all connected to, you know, wireless, the internet, the whole nine yards. So, again, money doesn't fix everything, but we are really at an unfair advantage. You talk about, you know, the demographics of the town and so forth, and how it's changing. Well, yeah, it is changing, and sometimes we have to do a little bit extra to provide an equal playing field. And in terms of using technology, we're just, we're not even, we're not even in the game.
It's tough, and I'll share the story of Dr. Benavich, no, I won't share it.
Thank you. I think it's a good point to leave it on, because we're, let's just say that we need technology, or for Dr. Sylvia to say we need technology, we need technology. For him to get there, nothing else needs to be said on that one. Yes, last point.
I'm glad Mr. Swett brought up the looping class, 'cause my child participated in the first and second grade looping class at Deccus, and it was great, we loved that program. And I asked myself, you know, was it so good because it looped, or was it so good because the teachers were so good? Because the teachers were really good. And that's one of those things that I wish that we would explore as a district. I mean, we always talk about data and, you know, finding these gems, I mean, why can't we track these kids that have gone through these looping classes and see, listen, did they do better later on in other years? You know, did they have a good head start, or did it really pay off? That's what I'd love to see, you know, that we do, with the kids that we know have done these looping classes, you know, with inform or whatever it takes to track that. And can that be done, or no?
We have the data. We have data, but unfortunately, it's probably more in report card form.
More of a what?
In report card form, for the younger years, because we didn't start to have the progress monitoring data until two years ago.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Very, very much. Ms. Miranda, Ms. Siemens, Ms. Morgan, and Ms. Panerisi, I appreciate all the time and energy and, sorry, and the school council, especially the members that are here tonight. Thank you for, we know how much work and time that these go into, and you just, I hope you understand how beneficial they are to us. And these don't only stay here, these are things that we continue to look at all throughout the year. So I just want you to understand that all the work that you put into it is actually, it helps us when it comes to some of the decisions that we need to make, when it looks at the future of these schools and where we need to move. So I just think it's important, and please, for the folks that aren't here, make sure you bring that back to them, that we appreciate everything that goes into these reports and for what you presented tonight. So thank you. And thank you for the committee members. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of gifts. Dr. Benavich?
Yes, I'd like to recommend the acceptance of a gift from the Wareham Youth Soccer Club for materials and labor to repair the large soccer field at the John W. Deccus Elementary School. The approximate value of this gift is $4,000 for sod, grass, equipment, labor, and any fertilizer needed.
Do you have a motion?
Don't move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five-zero-zero, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That's all for gifts.
Superintendent's report?
I have none this evening, I knew it was gonna be a long meeting.
Do we have any school committee reports? Any reports from the school committee? So the only thing that I'll say, probably when we come back after, we'll be doing a, in July sometime, I will be asking the committee for a workshop, but then I'll have time to be able to work with the new superintendent around some of the subgroups that we've had before, which each one of the committee members, we call them subgroup or advisory group, and I'd like to be able to propose those to the committee the first meeting in August. Yes?
Do you want to schedule an executive session?
That's under any other business. Any other reports? Okay. Any other business? I have one. We do have, we're close to an agreement with the new superintendent. What I would like to do is schedule an executive session, so then all committee members, so the subcommittee for the superintendent contract negotiation can present to this group, to present to you the contract, so then we can vote on it. Can we take a look at our schedules and do an executive session? Sooner than later would be great.
Next Wednesday?
Can we do next Wednesday, say, six o'clock? I don't expect it to be more than an hour. So Wednesday, the twelfth, at 6:00 PM, executive session would be...
Where?
In the middle school library, if it's available, but Michelle will need to check Is everyone okay with that? Okay, so Michelle, if you can, take a look, executive session, twelve o'clock, for the purposes of voting on the superintendent's contract.
Six PM.
Six PM. Thank you very much for that. Anything else? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.